Good evening and welcome. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to the first school committee forum of this calendar year. This is something that the school committee has wanted to do, and we're very pleased that now that we can be together in person as well as some remote. We have our Newburyport Hub who will be filming, and this forum will be posted on their website probably by late tomorrow afternoon. The forum was arranged based on where we are in the school district and wanting to provide an opportunity for parents to talk to our health experts about COVID and their concerns and where we are going as a school district. So we will spend about an hour. We have questions that were submitted in advance of the forum that Vice Chair Callahan will read the questions for the panel. We're still expecting our medical director from the schools. But on our panel so far, we have Sean Gallagher, as you know, is our superintendent of schools, Lauren McDonald, our Newburyport Public School Director of Health Services, and our extended leadership team, which includes Frank Giacalone, who is the director of our health services in the city, Pam Colombo, who is our city public health nurse, Jessica Sue, Dr. Sue, who has been working closely with us since the original surge, Commander Mike Allard, who is remote, and we still anticipate our school M D, Lars Lundgren, to join us shortly. So with that, we will run for about an hour, close the forum, and then we'll have a short school committee business meeting. So thank you all for coming, and thanks to all who submitted questions. And Mr. Callahan, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks everybody for coming out. I know there's a lot of meetings the last couple days, kids doing orientation and such, so thanks for coming. We're going to start this with the presentation that Ms. Furlong is going to run so that Pam Colombo can inform you of all the latest data from the state and city. Yes? All right. Ms. Furlong?
Oh, that's great. So I'm sure you're all very interested to start off with the breakdown by age. So this is for the month of August, and then we'll transition to our past month, recently September. So as you can see, it seems like a pretty even distribution of ages. And of interest, of course, is the zero to 10, which is a 14, sorry, 4 percent. And the 11 to 20-year-olds, 18 percent. I appreciate we're capturing some of those folks that are like college or graduating from high school, but that's how we're kind of just bringing it down evenly in 10-year increments. As we advance forward to September, we're seeing a little bit of a shift. So these numbers should be pretty well complete for the month of September. There might be a few stragglers, but we did see a little bit of a shift in the zero to 10-year-old group to 13 percent if you recall. Previously, we were at 4 percent. But unfortunately, we are seeing a slight decrease in the 11 to 20-year-olds to 5 percent for the month of September. This is kind of a general trajectory for the year of 2021. So as you can see, we're quite high as we jumped into 2021 in January at 233 cases for that month. It's a nice steady decline, a lull in June and July, and unfortunately, we see that little bit of a creep that everyone's talking about predominantly starting in the month of August. We went from 12 cases in the month of July, jumped to 71 in August, and we are now coming in at 99 for the month of September. In terms of vaccine data, of course, I think Lauren McDonald will have a really much better insight as to the specific data for the Newburyport school system. This captures all children within this age group in Newburyport, including those who attend other schools. But as you can see, highlighted for the 12 to 15-year-old group, we're at 79 percent with at least one dose per capita. And then we anticipate the second measure of the fully vaccinated group with two doses of Pfizer to jump up as well, but we're currently at 67 percent. Once that other cohort that recently got vaccinated gets their second dose, we'll see that jump up nicely. In terms of our 16 to 19-year-olds within the community, they did a fantastic job. They're at greater than 95 percent. And you can see the fully vaccinated group is at 88 percent. Again, I appreciate this doesn't necessarily capture, the cap kept off usually at 18 for high school years, but just gives a general picture of the community data. I think I have some more of these that doesn't have answers. My apologies. Oh, I guess that's all that came through.
Okay.
Do you have any more of the data listed here?
Yeah, so, um, sorry, I don't have any slides that are beautiful like Pam's, but I do have some information. So we've been, over the last couple weeks, the nurses have been working really hard at getting all of the information into our electronic health record. And obviously, with 800 students, it takes time to go through all those papers, but what we have found is so far, at the high school, 73 percent of our students are fully vaccinated, and that's probably higher because we have 51 students who are not found in the MIS system, which is the system that records all information about anyone's vaccinations in Massachusetts. We also have found that some students got their second dose or even both doses in New Hampshire, and that information would not be shared with the state system. So the nurses are working really hard to kind of go through that, call parents when we see one dose or we don't see any doses, and just ask them to send in the information. So I anticipate that number to be going up over the next couple weeks. It has been going up every week due to more information being inputted into our system. We have 78 percent with at least one vaccination at the high school, so we're getting up there. The middle school, they're working on those numbers, and I anticipate those numbers to be pretty high as well, the 12 and elders, because we are, we actually had our vaccination clinic over the last month, and we had a lot of 12-year-olds who attended, so that that number should, their numbers should be available pretty soon. Our staff and faculty, of those people who responded, we have 99 percent vaccinated. We only have a handful of people who haven't responded yet, and we reached out to them again today. And our COVID dashboard is up and running, so if you, you know, go to the main page of the NDS website, you'll be able to click on that and see that data, and you can actually, as a parent, go in and change the dates, go back to last year at this time. You can get a lot of data from that information. We do report our numbers to DESI every Wednesday, and that information is also available every Thursday on the DESI website. And at this moment, I can give you the data for the district's current cases. We have cases who are actually out right now. At the NAC, we have one case, and at the Brezner Hand, we have four close contacts, so we're doing really well right now. Things look good this week. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Lauren. Mr. Gallagher, do you have anything to add to that, or are we only getting on with the questions now?
Yes, just to follow up, and I think working with the medical advisory team, for the people that are watching, we meet every Wednesday since the pandemic started, so that's been, except we had a couple weeks off in July because, you know, that's when we thought we were through this. But we meet every Wednesday, we share the data through the city, then we also share our data within the schools, and then having Dr. Sue and Mike Allard as part of our team along with Lars Lundgren, they really work, this has been their job, working with this virus and looking at not only the data that we're looking at, but also at the nation and the state level. So our medical advisory team really gives us some great advice on how to proceed, but we've been having these weekly meetings at 10:00 AM every Wednesday. The one thing, as superintendent, that we're seeing or that we're experiencing is a lot of the cases that are coming in are those breakthrough cases. So we've had parents that are fully vaccinated that are coming down with the Delta variant and spreading it on to their children. So that's, you know, the, it's kind of like the game changer for us right now. Many of us are fully vaccinated, and we're hitting that six-month window, and as we know, and Dr. Sue can probably talk a lot more about the Delta variant and what they're seeing in a lot more detail, but I think that that's, for us, is the change. We'll go through, I think there's going to be a lot of questions regarding the protocols and looking at, you know, testing. So a lot of the quarantining restrictions that I think were imposed last year are a lot different in the sense of a 14-day quarantine is now turning into a five-day if people are symptom-free. We have different protocols. So our ultimate goal for our school system is to stay in school, full in school, as long as we can, and we have all these protocols to do that. So those are just my thoughts on that.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. I'm going to start reading the questions now, just so people know. The way it worked is we had people fill out a form. It was open for roughly a week, and we got 24 questions. As you may imagine, some of them are similar, a lot having to do with masks and protocols and not going to wear masks and so on. So I broke them up into a couple categories. We have masks, vaccinations, case data, which is what we just talked about, and pool testing, and then kind of a handful that are none of those things. But since we just talked about this, I guess I'm going to go into the case numbers, and I know Lauren just spoke about this, but it may, you may have, think of something else to say, Ms. McDonald, when I read these. So I'm going to read the submitter's name and address, and then most of their question. I've kind of edited just for clarity and brevity, but nothing's missing, and then all these questions will be posted on the district website in full for the record. So Anthony, what's that? I'm sorry.
Dr. Lundgren.
Oh, Dr. Lundgren. Dr. Lars Lundgren, everybody. Okay, so the submitter's name is Anthony, and I'm certainly going to mispronounce this, Dispac, I'm sorry about that, 201 High Street. And the question is, "With high vaccination rates among the eligible population in Newburyport, the 84 new cases and 2 percent two-week positivity rate as of 9/27 is concerning. Can the medical team and district please be more transparent about case counts and school-specific stats?" I'm just going to go to the next one, if you need me to reference back. Kristy Lemire from 10 Minute Circle, "I would appreciate being given the choice to send my child to school if there hasn't been a known positive COVID case in the classroom. I understand the close contact protocols. I would consider anyone within the same classroom in close contact and would prefer to be able to make an informed choice." I guess that's going to come down to what are we actually doing in terms of how we're going to identify close contacts versus just kids in the room? And the last one for this from Kaylee Kimball at 62 Kent Street, "When positive cases are reported amongst students and staff, who is informed as part of contact tracing? Who is deemed to have been exposed from a close contact? Are all of those families informed of possible exposure, and does it include children who ride on the same bus?" So basically, they're wondering case counts and how we're doing the contact tracing within each classroom. Would you like to go first?
I can, I can start with that. I think the first question you were asked was asking, just trying to read it. Oh, can the, can the district be more transparent? So we do have the COVID dashboard up and running. It does separate cases and close contacts, staff and students, and it separates them out into each school. So all of that information is right up there, updated every Friday, so it's not a daily update, which I don't know if I could even get that done, but I can do every Friday, and I do every Wednesday for the, for the state. So it's also on the state website, and those, the state website only has positive cases, but our website has positive cases and also close contacts in each school. So in terms of transparency, it's, it's available to everybody. And certainly, if anyone ever has a question, they can give me a call, and I can give you the numbers on that day, you know, so, and the, I can give you the up-to-date cases for the year as well. And that information is also retrievable through the website. I think the next question was, who is notified in the classroom?
Two of them we have a very similar.
Yeah, so they sounded similar. So when a person is identified, or somebody tells us, or we hear from Pam, that somebody's positive in the classroom, we look back to whether they were contagious in the classroom. So if they were contagious while they were in the classroom, if they were in the classroom during the contagious period, we would contact trace with the teacher. The nurse will call the teacher, will go in the classroom, they'll figure out who was sitting near those students, who were they sitting at lunch? We have seating charts for all of these situations, and we'd go from there. So if a student was fully vaccinated and deemed a close contact, according to Department of Public Health and DESI, they do not have to quarantine. So we would notify the parent anyways, because what we want them to do is still for 14 days, look for symptoms, because we know the Delta variant is pretty contagious, spread through families very quickly. So we ask them to watch for symptoms for 14 days. So that's a vaccinated student. Non-vaccinated student or not fully vaccinated student would have to choose one of two options. So if they were within, so the definition of a close contact hasn't changed, within six feet for more than 15 minutes. But if our classrooms are set at three feet or more apart, which they are, that's our goal this year, the unvaccinated student can participate in our test and stay program. So our test and stay program would be tests for five days, five school days. If it's over a weekend, we test them on Monday, and if they're negative, they get to stay in school. So the whole goal is, let's keep these kids in school, so we can test all of the unvaccinated students who were three feet or more apart and masked, they can do the test and stay. Or a parent can choose not to do test and stay, and they can do the traditional quarantine, which is they can choose to get tested on day five and come back on day eight, or they do the, you know, the full 10 days if they don't, if they don't choose to test. Does that answer the questions? So all of those people deemed to close contacts, the parents would be notified, even if they're not going to be prior to the test and stay. We want them to keep watching their child for symptoms and make sure that they don't come to school when they're sick.
Great, thank you. Is anybody else having to say that about Pam or Mr. Gallagher? I wasn't saying, there is a flow chart too for parents.
There is, yes, yeah.
Just been added last week, I think.
Yep.
So now it's up to date with the correct DESI information and what our testing protocols are, so that's going to be.
Yeah, and the protocols are all on the website under the health, health information, and the flow chart is, I believe, is up there. Yes, Brian edited it for us. If it isn't, it will be tonight.
Correct. And I think the, you know, the two different testing protocols that we have in place now, we have the test and stay, and then we have the symptom testing, which is located in all the nurses' office. It's just a lot faster way to determine the condition of those close contacts, and, you know, with the ultimate goal is to keep students in school and not just send people off, like last year, for 14 days, 10 to 14 days quarantining, when they may not need to be quarantined. So our nursing staff works extremely close with all the close contacts. Remember, because it's also with, with, because it's a medical condition, there's a lot of confidentiality around that. So for the students that are not considered close contacts, those families would not be notified of, you know, of that case. So that's kind of the HIPAA laws and confidentiality. But remember, we also have a lot of experience, not only working with this great medical advisory team for almost a year and a half now, but we went through a lot of different scenarios last year, and I think we, as a district, did a fabulous job within our school system following all those protocols, so.
Yeah, and I read that our nursing team has been through this. They know what to look for. They're very well-versed in this disease, and they are, they're really good at identifying students who they think, you know, may need to be tested. So the symptomatic testing is working great, and the test and stay is really keeping a lot of kids in school.
Right. Great, thank you. That kind of leads us right into pool testing. We had three questions regarding pool testing, which we did not do this year, which was the test and stay protocol. From Amy Roberts at 5 Dexter Street, "Going into the fall and winter, would pool testing provide important feedback regarding positive cases and close contacts so that the district can evaluate its current practices and best protect its students, staff, and families?" Jen Evansmith at 10 Lunch Street, a similar question, "Will pool testing continue? If so, when? Will more COVID-related data be shared widely?", which we just went over. And Kristen Rowe from 47 Washington Street, asking, "Why did Newburyport decide not to continue with pool testing in the fall of 2021 when the program was so well-received? Newburyport was recognized as the leading district for pool testing in spring 2021."
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it. Yeah, sure. So when DESI came out with these new testing options, the test and stay and the symptomatic, we really thought those were going to be super helpful, and our nurses were happy to see that we could test our symptomatic students in particular, because that was really an issue last year. We would have to send the students home, and they would have to go get a test, and they'd have to wait a couple days for the results, and they would be out sometimes four or five days, and then they'd find out they were positive, they were negative, and they came back to school. Here, with, we chose these testing options because we thought they were the best for the district. The pool testing for sure is something that is a great tool, but with the other mitigation strategies that we have and these two new testing options, we thought that was going to be the best plan for us. Pool testing only works if you have a good amount of the students participating. If we're only, you know, testing 40 percent of the students in, you know, in a year, then, you know, we're not getting a really good, you know, sample. So what we did have was a lot of emails and phone calls asking for, and you could, you could go either way, a lot of people, you know, do want the pool testing back, which is something we're not against. If we see cases coming forward, and we're seeing a lot of cases in school, we see a group, you know, say, maybe one school is looking like its, cases are going up, we would certainly consider that, and the medical advisory team, we would discuss it, and we've talked about, you know, that possibility of that in the future. But at this moment, our, our cases are looking good. Our, our schools are doing a really good job. The masks are helping tremendously, and, you know, we are distancing, we're doing it three feet. Initially, DESI had said we were going to have no distancing requirements, and then they came up with these testing protocols that require distancing. So, you know, we're always kind of pivoting, and so we, we chose to be a little bit more conservative here and go with three feet of distance, and we're still doing seating charts, so we know where kids are, and we know who are the close contacts. So these programs seem to be working really well for us right now, but we're not against pool testing if we need it in the future.
And just to follow up, I agree 100 percent, and if you recall, last spring, pool testing was really the only option for testing in schools. So throughout the summer, these other two programs, and having the ability for our nursing office to test all students, especially if it's a stay, test and stay, or if it's symptomatic students. So every time a student goes to the nurse's office and they're not feeling well, if the parents have signed the consent, we can also test, that's a symptomatic testing. And if a parent has not signed the consent, a nursing staff reaches out to those parents and guardians and say, you know, can we get consent to test also? So I think having those two options within the school system has been very, very effective up to this date. Also, the other piece is, if you recall, now we have more and more of our students are, and families choosing to get vaccinated too. So we have a larger percentage of our students from 12 and up that are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, and some with the mobile unit that came in last, I think it was last week or two weeks ago. We had many students get that first shot also. So I think having those two programs in place right now has been very effective. As Ms. McDonald said, if all of a sudden, you know, we're watching two, two things. I think we're looking at the vaccination rates within our students and staff and employees, at the same time, looking at the levels of the Delta variant. So higher vaccination rates with a lower-level variant exposure for everybody is a good sign. If that Delta variant and COVID starts spreading more within our community, then we can go back to more of a generalized pool testing. So we always have that option down the road.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that with the test and stay and the symptomatic, these are cases where we know the person's been exposed, or they are, they're showing signs of COVID. So these testing options are really helpful to us this year, and we're kind of thankful that we have those options. Where pool testing is, you know, random, and these tests, these two testing programs are, you know, specifically targeted to people who are either close contacts or are showing symptoms of COVID. So I think something we were hoping for, I know as a school nurse last year, I was really hoping for something like this, and it was really helpful to get that added to our kind of.
Strategies.
Strategies, our mitigation strategies.
Great, thank you. The next set of questions is concerning vaccinations and how we're doing. From Jared Mercer at 125 Low Street, "School districts throughout the nation and even some entire states have required vaccines for those currently eligible. Our governor decided not to require vaccinations statewide at this point, but has turned the decision over to local authorities. Can you please provide an answer as to why our schools are not requiring the vaccine for all those eligible?" Eric Luck at 7 Tracy Street writes, "Will there be plans to add the COVID-19 required immunizations to attend school?" Elizabeth Sawicki at 33 Jefferson Street asks a similar question, "Is the city planning additional vaccine clinics once the COVID vaccine is authorized for children under 12?" And finally, Kate Curley at 2 William Hall Drive asks, "Every Thursday, the state publishes a weekly municipal COVID-19 vaccination report. Per this report, first doses numbers are encouraging for every age group. However, given the more than three to four-week lag by the numbers for fully vaccinated, never move to match the number previously partially vaccinated. This happens across all age groups. Is this report accurate? Do you have other numbers that show better uptake on the second dose? And if this report is accurate, is there any outreach planned for people who have not gotten their second dose?" So I guess the first thing, we're going to mandate vaccinations.
Sure. I think at this time, no, we're not looking to mandate, I think, the vaccination. I really want to credit our community, from the adults in our community along with the students. I think our vaccination rates, especially for all the employees in the district, are extremely good. As Ms. McDonald said earlier, we're, for the faculty that responded, we're at 99 percent. For the employees in Newburyport Public Schools, and employees that have not filled out, it's very low, so even if you took that number, we're at 92 percent. And that's if you consider those people that didn't reply, they were not vaccinated. So I think for our district, I think from the parents and the guardians out there working with the students, our vaccination rates are looking very, very promising here in Newburyport. So I wouldn't foresee a mandated vaccination to be imposed, you know, within our school, school district. So I think we're, we're in a great place in Newburyport. I think our community, from our students, from our staff, from parents, guardians, and community members, taking this virus extremely seriously, and we're doing everything that we can within the city to, you know, to get back to, I think we're close to normal, but eventually, taking a look at the math. I think we're close to normal, but eventually taking a look at the masks down the road, so.
Yeah, and I'll speak to the vaccination clinic. Oh, my, sorry. Yes, we absolutely plan on having another vaccination clinic when it is announced that twelve and unders are eligible. We will definitely have that here on site. And the state is providing mobile vaccination clinics for all school districts. And I was able to get the one that we had recently. I called them and they were like, when do you want to have it? They were so amenable to any date in time that we wanted it. So that will happen for sure.
And I can also add in terms of the health department and our vaccination clinics as well. Right now, believe it or not, it's flu season, so we're getting ready to make announcements on our, in a try, combination of try flu, flu clinics at the senior center. And right now, we're actually learning a, and being trained on a new platform in terms of registering for getting the flu vaccine. And the same system is used also for administering and registering people for the COVID vaccine, similar to the platform that was used when we had our first clinic here at the senior center. And right now, yes, we would love to get that COVID vaccine out. However, we haven't gotten any guidance from the state. What happens is we have to be on board with this new system, number one. Number two, we don't know if they're going to be setting certain restrictions because with the Moderna and the Pfizer that we gave out, we had to have clinics that could support X amount of people. First responders, we had to have a minimum of two hundred. So locally here in Newburyport, we couldn't just order the vaccine. That's why we had to collaborate with the other towns. And then when the next group of people opened up for vaccines, they moved goalposts. We needed a minimum of seven hundred and fifty vaccines given per week. And that's why we moved to a bigger venue and we had a total of nine, nine cities and towns in that collaborative. So we're preparing for it right now and we're just waiting to see what or any guidance or restrictions the state is going to give us. But right now, we're not working on the flu vaccine, which our breast clinic is going to be, probably is, I believe, next week, Pam. And we're shooting for the citywide clinics at the end of October.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I, I mean, we have also a medical president here. We've been talking a lot. I want to hear more from you, Dr. Sue and Dr. Lundberg. So I'm not sure if you want to weigh in on some of the topics that we just talked about.
Yeah, I'll just say that the one thing about the vaccines is, although we're not mandating them, as you can see through all the efforts that we've just said, the real, our real push and approach is to get the public health message out there that vaccines are essential to ending the pandemic and offering every opportunity that we can to ensure that people not only have their first dose, but that they have their second dose. And really, the push is about educating and offering the opportunity for everyone. And I think that has really been the way we have tried to address this, to ensure the highest levels of vaccination at our schools.
Dr. Lundberg?
Yeah, no, I agree, Dr. Sue. I mean, I think the mandating is not as effective as we may think it can be. You know, we have been mandating vaccines, obviously for shelter diseases for many years, but we're still struggling with some people who may or may choose not to have them. The flu vaccine is not mandated, so if we are talking about mandating COVID vaccine, we need to think about mandating flu vaccine as well. So I think this is the right approach right now to really, like Dr. Sue says, get out the message that this is an important vaccine, that it is, it's effective and it's safe and that it's also giving the approach of getting as many as possible vaccinated. I'm very impressed with the numbers here right now on the vaccination rate in Newburyport, especially in the students in high school that, you know, almost, you know, eighty-eight percent are vaccinated. Amazing, that's great, good job.
Great, thank you very much. This is going to be the mask set of questions, which is the most we got, so bear with me as I read through them and hopefully you guys can follow along on the list of the questions that you received. The first one's going to be from Colleen Fallon from nine Crystal Drive in Hampton Falls, New Hampshire, which is unusual, but we have choice in kids and families who don't necessarily live in the district with both parents. Some New Hampshire public and private schools that are close to the mask border have implemented mask choice policies for schoolchildren. Will you look at their policies and data in consideration of mask choice for Newburyport district? Timothy Carrier at seventy-seven Madison Street in Haverhill. Why can people go to a Red Sox or Patriots game without a mask when there are thousands of people yelling and screaming when our children have to wear masks in class with twenty kids and teachers? O'Rourke Garth from twenty-four Arlington Street. States, a range of European countries as well as many school districts in the U.S. do not mandate masks for children under twelve. How exactly are masked children in Newburyport, which enjoys one of the highest vaccination rates in the world, better off than their peers who do not need to cover their faces during school hours? Is there anything you can learn from them? We have some pretty standard ones. I read them a queue at four Toomey Drive. What is the timeline for discontinuing face masks requirement in the school? Pamela Lenveckio of seventeen Ellsworth Road says, do you think or anticipate the early elementary to stay masked throughout this academic year? Megan Fulmer from eighteen Arlington Street asks, will you continue to require masks and follow the CDC guidelines? Another fairly common question, Andrea Lynn at two Colton Drive. When can the children stop wearing masks? And this one is one question in four parts, so. Jesse Lombard from seven Howard Street. What are the metrics being used to require and eliminate masks? I know we've spoken about metrics in the medical team meetings as well. Are there mandates still being passed out from the state level with no opportunity for local communities to decide what is best for their classrooms? What are a few of the areas we'll be emphasizing in the years after the pandemic ends to try and make up for the lack of emotional and psychological development that we have lost due to mask usage? And is the administration open to enforcing any statewide mandates with an intensity it feels warranted as opposed to absolute? And then the final question from Sonia Linteris at twenty-one Cushing Avenue. In Newburyport, eighty-eight percent of children sixteen to nineteen years are vaccinated, sixty-six percent of children twelve to fifteen years vaccinated. Despite these statistics and also despite the fact that COVID is not shown to spread in school, our children are still wearing masks. What metrics do you believe the city would need to meet in order for our children to remove masks in school? Would it be positivity rate, vaccination rate, vaccination rate, et cetera?
Well, we talked about the percentages and our metrics. Maybe, Dr. Sue, you could, you know, step in on that and kind of what we look at as we make these decisions.
Yeah, and I think one thing to be clear, there is not a formula that we have set in order to decide this is, this is the formula that equals we're going to stop wearing masks. So we just want to be clear about that upfront. I think there's several things that we need to consider when it comes to making this decision. Number one is with children under the age of twelve, right now, there is no vaccine. And so while there's no vaccine, that does put us in a precarious situation. And as you saw from the diagrams that were shown before, we see an increase in number of cases in our children. So for now, we feel the best thing to do for the elementary school and younger kids certainly is that for their own protection, masks are essential. We also see this substantiated when we look at other towns nearby. And one I allude to is just the local outbreak that's happened in Seabrook when they had not mandated masks. When it comes to older grades, you know, there's a lot of interesting thoughts about this and how this actually will evolve. I think one of the things that's most important to consider is the Delta variant being so contagious in combination with the fact that we are concerned about the limited utility of the vaccination. You know, there's, there are data out there suggesting that as time goes on, our antibody titers decrease and our vaccination efficacy decreases. And we can see this substantiated when we look at colleges where a hundred percent of the children are mandated to be vaccinated, yet there are substantial breakthrough cases. And I can think of just among my own friends, two situations of that where, you know, young adults think that they are, you know, completely just protected against the vaccine because they've been vaccinated and been in settings where there's been large outbreaks, despite the fact that everyone has been vaccinated. So I think especially as we, as time progresses, without understanding how the efficacy of the vaccine works over time in conjunction with, you know, potentially how that may impact our schools, we would like to err on the safe side. And that's one of the reasons why at this point, we have continued to mandate masks at all levels in our school system.
Right, and at the state level right now, as, as we all know, the commissioner mandated the mask mandate until November first, so it's the end of this month. But just like Dr. Sue said, we continue to monitor and look at a lot of different factors in, you know, making our decision, along with working with the state and the commissioner and other state health agencies. So we also get that information from Governor Baker. But there's a lot of, I, I just think there's a lot of information that goes into making those decisions. And, you know, we'll see, you know, going down and where the state will be at the end of this month. But as, as we know, the vaccination, you know, from what we hear, for the younger children, twelve and under, you know, first trials or might be available at the end of this month. So that may have also an impact on what the commissioner and the state is going to decide for all schools to.
And I think what's important too is to know that we look at the positivity rate also. So our positivity rate has been climbing, so, but not at an alarming rate where we see some of the uptowns. And when you look at it, you see these towns that don't have any type of mask mandate or high vaccination rate. So we look at that as well and the question about, well, you have thousands of people at a Patriots game or a Red Sox game. I went on site and I was kind of beside myself. Is it the honor system? So anybody that's unvaccinated should be wearing a mask? So I, I feel it's taken a great, a huge risk, a huge risk for the fans that are there. And the fact that they're considering that those are outdoor venues. So being outdoors, get less of a risk. Think about the kids being in class, whether it be all day or whatnot. So even though we have free ventilation in our schools, you're still indoors and with other people. So the mask for indoors is, is the right way to go. And that's why we're not seeing a huge, huge outbreak. So the numbers support what we're doing and I'm totally behind that, support about that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any comments about those questions?
I just want to mention that even though the rates are very good in this community, just in our practice, we looked at our September data and, you know, that was when the kids were going back to school. And we've done over twelve hundred tests within our, in our practice and of that, two point five percent was positive, about the same rate as, you know, in, in the area. But it is a definite increase in our children compared to during the summer and prior to that. So it does kind of align itself with kids going back to school. There has been some increase of COVID because of that, whether that's all based on going in school. I can't say that for sure, but obviously, you know, I think anything that can minimize the spread of the virus should be taken seriously. And, you know, masks have shown to be very effective. I also wanted to point out, I do think the question about the psychological welfare of the kids are an important question that we should not minimize. We are seeing a lot of more children and teenagers, you know, dealing with anxiety as one of the symptoms of this whole pandemic. I'm not quite so sure that that, how much the mask mandate has actually caused the increase in anxiety versus just the whole pandemic as a whole and, and everything has been talked about it. I personally feel that most children and teenagers I see, and I ask all of them who are able to answer me, tend not to think that masks are a big deal for them. I think most of them are comfortable enough to wear them in school or when they're asked to wear them. There are a few that are very, a few kids and teenagers that do seem to be taking masks more seriously or having difficulty wearing them, but I think that those are minority. The only population that we always have to think about are those kids with special needs who it may be difficult to wear a mask. And I know the school is taking, you know, some flexibility with that for those kids and for those families. But my, in my own opinion, I do not see the mental health piece with masks being a big, big issue. I do see the pandemic as a whole as being a big issue for, for our children.
Thank you. Just to follow up on two points, I think. When we're looking at the, as we were planning for this year and the return of our students, we really emphasized the social, emotional learning support. We've added adjustment counselors within the district. And we also have Tim Potts as a new position. It's a behavioral health coordinator that is helping coordinate K to twelve model regarding social, emotional support for our students. So I think Newburyport Public Schools, we're in a, I think, a good place in working with our students and families that are dealing with some anxiety, depression and other mental health issues for a lot of different reasons, but also through the pandemic. And I think the, the second story going into, and I share this with school committee at one of our public meetings. But if you recall, at the end of June, the governor and the commissioner, you know, we thought this was behind us, right? So at the end of June, school was going to start full normal, no masks, no protocols. And that was a, you know, really exciting for us as we ended the school year. Although we ended the school year, everyone wearing masks. We had to make a decision after July fourth. And our decision, we had our summer school programming going on and we were not required to have students wear masks or staff wear masks. Working with the medical advisory team right before the end of June, we just thought, you know, our students are used to the masks, our staff are used to the masks. So as we begin that summer school, schooling for over the six months, six weeks in July and August, we decided to go with masks, well, maybe some other districts did not. We did have a case where we had a fully vaccinated staff member contract the Delta variant. And she was working with our preschool students, three and four-year-olds. So I know a lot of times, you know, people throw statistics and the kids don't get it, they get it, it's not a big deal. But it is a big deal. For that scenario, because everyone was wearing masks and the teacher that had the Delta variant was teaching in that, those sessions, it did not spread to the children. The other piece though is, as Ms. McDonald talked about, we reach out to the families as close contacts. And at the preschool level, grade three and four, I mean, as you know, trying to keep them socially distanced, you know, for, for thirty seconds is nearly impossible. But we had to reach out to those families to let them know of this scenario. Some of those parents are new parents. So it's a very emotional conversation for our nursing staff and these parents to say to their parents that their child may have been in contact with the Delta variant as a close contact. So there's this whole emotional side that you're not going to read about if you say, well, there's ten kids that had COVID or there's twenty kids that had COVID. There's a human side to all of this and those phone calls. And I think myself as a parent and all, all of us are parents first and guardians that do have children, that's a scary thing, you know? And luckily, you know, the, most of the students and children overcome this and rebound quick. The other thing is, you know, we're in, we have twenty-two, about twenty-two hundred students in our district and some of those students are medically fragile, which is a concern because if they acquire this variant, it could have severe consequences. So I think that that story in the summertime schooling and being over cautious and putting in protocols at that time was a right decision because, you know, once again, it did not spread it, you know, mainly because people were wearing the masks in, in school. So I just wanted to share those two thoughts, thanks.
Great, thank you. This is going to be the last four questions and they are going probably to specific people. So, Mr. Gallagher, you're going to be on the spot first. Joe Cheever at twenty-two Goldsmiths Drive asks, at the school committee meeting prior to schools at the school committee meeting prior to schools starting this fall, we were told that the same COVID protocols in school continue as they had last year. Contrary to that, full grades of students are eating together in cafeteria. There is limited classroom distancing, no pool testing, and there was an assembly with both fourth and fifth graders together in the auditorium. Could you help us understand how these loosened restrictions make sense considering the more contagious strain of the virus and no vaccines for children under 12?
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's a, the protocols that were in place last year and moving into this school year. So if you recall, the D E S A and healthcare professionals at the state level, as we were moving into the school year, they started coming out with their new guidance. I would say probably mid-August or late August. If you recall, there wasn't any decisions regarding moving into the school year. I think a week before school started, both masks or no, or no masks, and the state mandated the masks. So a lot of the protocols that we had in place last year, we're not required to put a lot of those protocols in according to the state. But I just want to reassure our parents and guardians that we are doing more than the bare minimum that's being required in many other school districts. So we're going three feet or more in a lot of the classroom, the classroom spaces. We're monitoring our lunches, as Ms. McDonald said, by grouping the students and having the ability to contact trace. So we have a lot of those mitigation strategies in place, but they're not as restrictive as they were last year. For, I think for a lot of different reasons. We just talked about the, going from the different types of testing this year that we have available with the stay, test and stay, and then the symptomatic testing that's being utilized in all the nurses' offices. We didn't have that option last year. The only option we had last year was pool testing. And as we were talking about, you were casting a wide net just to see. I think we're a lot more educated as parents, guardians and community members regarding this virus. So I, and also our students are a lot more educated. So looking at the protocols from last year to this year along with all of the guidance from the state, we're trying to normalize as much as we can a school setting. But we're also, as I said, we're not doing the bare minimum. We do have different protocols in place. And we monitor the, the lunchroom is the key. So at all the elementary schools, we're sitting the students and spacing them out as best we can, three feet or more. And a lot of the cases, and then we're monitoring the, the time of eating. So eating is a little bit quicker because it's that 15 minutes. We're trying to go less than the 15 minutes and give them a few extra minutes out in the playground. So that's kind of where we're at. And that's kind of why there's a little bit of a difference between the strategies last year versus the strategies moving into this year.
Great, thank you. This one's going to be for the medical professionals from Sheila Riems Balding at 10 Fair Street. There's a lot of misinformation out there about COVID. Could you please speak to some of these false rumors? Two, the concern me are one that states that swabs used for testing can cause cancer, and another, the claims of vaccines are unsafe. Who wants to jump into that? Lauren?
I can start. So on social media, as we all know, there are a lot of false claims. Sometimes it's misinformation. Sometimes it's people just don't read the complete, you know, study or article and they grab onto one thing that they really want to use to support their argument. So the, in particular, the swabs causing cancer, this has been debunked several times and it's kind of still out there. It's got a little bit of legs. It came out of the fact that swabs are sterilized, some swabs are sterilized with a product called ethylene oxide. And that's used to sterilize lots of medical equipment. And really, it's FDA, it's really tightly regulated by the FDA. So there are minimal amounts used and what's left over is not anything that, you know, would be able to cause cancer. Does ethylene oxide, can it cause cancer? There have been studies out there that, yes, in large amounts. But this is a highly regulated substance and these swabs cannot, cannot cause cancer. The other one was, oh, vaccine information. So we know from many, many, and you can jump in, Jessica, on this one, many, many studies that these vaccines are safe. There's a tight regulatory process that they have to go through. It's not to be taken lightly and we know that they're safe. But there are a lot of people out there who will spread the rumors or the misinformation to prove their own kind of point that they want to prove.
Yeah, and I guess I would just echo what you have said, that one thing that is very hard in the era today and I'm very sympathetic to is, is all of the information we have access to and how to decipher what is actually true from what is misinformation. And I would just encourage people to look at the source of the data. If they don't know the source of the data, to understand that there are reliable and unreliable sources and that that really comes down to where a lot of the misinformation comes from and that reliable sources tend to be well, well-known in scientific journals that have rigorous standards of peer review. And that, that is where really the large amount of validated studies are, are found and correct information can be inferred. I'd also echo that when it comes to the efficacy of things like vaccines, there is a tremendously rigorous process that something has to go through to be FDA-approved. And even in the case of what's been expedited here, the rigor is, is substantial. And, you know, I personally know several people who've been on the FDA panel and they're vaccinologists. And the, the amount of demonstration of the efficacy of the vaccine is really tremendous. And I guess one thing I would just comment is, you know, sometimes we worry about things like this or maybe very, very small things. Yet I may contrast that with something you may buy at the pharmacy and just pop in your mouth and think it's, think it's great and you're using it all the time and never questioning it, when the rigor of that is pretty much zero. And so just understand that there is a scientific process and there is a process that has checks and balances really to ensure that this is safe as possible for all of us. And I think now when you look back, you know, it's now been like 10 months since really we've been able to have the vaccine. And you can see the efficacy of it and you can see the safety of it in, in these past 10 months.
Excellent, thank you.
One, Dr. Sue, as well, in the same fashion. But I do want to, I do understand parents having questions about the vaccine, both because of the information streamed through, through our media, but also even if you read through the information sheet that, that is given with the vaccine, you know, questioning some of that potential side effects. Now, with every vaccine that we give to our children, there are potential side effects, but their side effect risk is low. And I try to tell parents, you have to balance this with what you're trying to do with the vaccine, in this case, protect against COVID, which can be a serious disease. And with the Delta variants, and Dr. Sue probably can speak towards that, it's definitely more serious for the kids as well. You know, we see that in some of the states, in our southern states, where the, where kids are filling up in hospitals. I don't know currently the data here in Boston or in Massachusetts per se, but, you know, kids are getting sicker with the variants. Young adults, teenagers are getting sicker with the Delta variants. It's not just getting sick. There are sorts of big side effects to getting COVID beyond that, which can relate to heart, for example. Now, some parents then mentioned, well, if you look at the information sheet, it talks about that there's a potential side effect to my teenager, to their heart, to inflammation around their heart. But again, yes, they have to write this up because it's been noted, you know, in, in the vaccines as we've had it up about 10 months. But we have to remember that the, that the frequency is extremely low and that the fact is that getting the disease, the frequency of some of these effects of the COVID virus itself is much, much more serious and much more common. So, you know, we try and, we have to educate parents about, you know, how you make these decisions. But I can understand that the questions do come up and we have to, we respect the parents for asking the questions and trying to give them the best answers.
Yeah, and just to follow up on those great points, you know, I do want to say, our number one job here for all of us is to keep our kids safe. And it's the job of us as parents, me as a mother of four, to ask the questions that make sure our children are safe. And that really is part of the process. So we don't want to downplay that at all. But really highlighting the one point that was brought up here is, you know, a lot of kids who may end up getting COVID, you know, they may get it and have almost no symptoms. But the, the reality is, a tremendous part of this pandemic has yet to, to be realized. And that is what the government is putting tons of research money in, and that is long COVID. And that is something that is, is much more prevalent even in asymptomatic COVID cases, is that they may end up with long-term symptoms that they have the rest of their life. And it may be things from, you know, not being, having a loss of sense or smell to some degree, to the brain fog. And, and I want to just highlight that that part of this is often something that can be underplayed, but really imperative that we are protecting against.
Excellent, thanks. This one question is, when I've come up myself a couple of times and it's come up in school committee meetings, from Dan Soliki of 33 Jefferson Street. If a child has to stay home from school because of quarantine, will they be able to learn via virtual classes, live streaming, or just work being sent home, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, so as you recall, part of last, I think last school year, the state allowed remote academy. We put a lot of effort and time. It's really making our remote academy, I think, exemplary compared to maybe some other districts. As we moved into the school year, you know, the commissioner and D E S A basically said that remote learning will not count for time on learning. So that made us kind of flip our thought process. I think there's two things that are balanced in here. I think number one, we know even if there is a close contact in quarantining, the quarantining is not, you know, being for two weeks because we do have the testing protocols in place so we can keep kids in school. And if there is a student that is ill or that needs to be ill for a time period, we are reaching out to them remotely, but it's not going to be as comprehensive as what we had last year. So we're not, our teachers and our staff will work with the families and the students that are home because they're not feeling well. The other piece the district has done is we've invested in building substitutes at each school. So when there is a student that may have to be ill for a time period, that cell will be checking in remotely with them and keeping them up to date. So we have put that, those protocols in place. But the remote academy that many of the families experienced last year was not going to be an option for this year, you know, through the state. So we kind of have a Plan B in place for those families. I think the number one thing that we really learned about this pandemic too is, and I think for all of us, is being flexible and dealing with the uncertainty. So there's a lot of things even this year that keep, you know, coming up and keep changing and then we adapt. One of them is that great question. If my son or daughter is going to be ill for an extended time, how are we going to have to check in? So we do have plans in place for those students that if they are sick and need to be ill, that we'll be working with the families.
Great, thank you. And the last question of the night, also in four parts, which should be mostly for the medical advisory team, from Sharif Zied, 192 Water Street. Part one, why aren't the medical advisory group meetings public meetings? Which I can answer for you if you'd like. It's essentially staff meetings. There's confidential information sometimes presented. But I'll let you guys expand on that if you'd like. Will the medical advisory board have a hand in crafting any potential vaccine mandates? Can expanding the advisory group be considered to allow for more opinions and ideas? Additional professionals perhaps? And finally, what do medical advisory board members see as the path back to the way school looked like prior to COVID-19?
Well, I'll. I can answer a couple of those pieces. I think we're very fortunate in Newburyport to have our medical advisory team along with the Board of Health. So not only do we have Frank, Board of Health, and Pam working together on a weekly basis. We have a great nursing staff with Ms. McDonald and her team. But the other piece that we are very, very fortunate. Mr. Nickerson, you cut me off. Mr. Nickerson's cut me off, so. We, all right, here we go. I think we're very, in the sense that we have, here we go. All right, very fortunate in the sense that we have our medical advisory team. So as Dr. Sue mentioned, you know, she's a parent first. She's got four children at each level in the district. But it's. Can I go up there and speak to you?
Sure.
Is it you?
It's Prince Al.
It's Ms. Ferlong in the back. No, I just, I think our medical advisory team. So here's the other piece that I know a lot of us read about the virus and sometimes we watch news and go online. So the people that we have advising us, number one, they're parents. So Dr. Sue's an epidemiologist. So her entire life, every day she wakes up, she's studying this virus. She has access to a lot of data in the nation. I know she was working with, you know, Dr. Fauci's team and all of that, writing reports. So we have that aspect. We also have Mike Gallagher, parent of three in the district, but also developed the safety protocols for the Massachusetts General Hospitals. So that's all the safety protocols that's working with not only just the nurses and the doctors, but it's the custodial staff, it's the cafeteria staff, it's everybody in that building. And then we're very fortunate to have a pediatrician, Dr. Lundergan, who also advises us in talking about the pediatric side of this. So the, our team, their expertise that they bring to the table, I think is a lot more, I guess, it's a lot more comprehensive than I think any one of us could read, you know, in the article. So they're on a daily basis, they're in this virus on a daily basis and giving us a lot of input to make decisions that's best for the entire district. So I'm just really pleased and honored to be working. And remember, it's every week that they've committed to the school district. So they're very busy people, but every week on Wednesdays, they're giving us their input. So I really believe that this medical advisory team is exemplary in providing us extremely important information. It's just not myself as superintendent, you know, talking to other superintendents. This is, this is the dream team if you're going to be dealing with the virus. So I just want to thank them, personally thank them for all their efforts. So thank you.
All right, I guess, I guess that's it. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, taking your time. All the audience, probably the most amount of people we've seen in the school committee meeting in person in quite a long time. Thank you very much again. If you have questions for Nurse McDonald, you can always email her or you can email the school committee and then we'll forward any questions on to the right staff member. And we're going to have the rest of our meeting now. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go home. It will be a very interesting discussion of warrants and minutes and the superintendent's report. But thanks again to the medical advisory team for coming out. All right, now we've come to the agenda. Mr. Paul, looking for warrants.
Excuse me.
Yes, we have.
I'd like to open the meeting, the call to order the meeting of the school committee business meeting for October 4th, 2021. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call? Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Make a holiday.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Here. Excellent, thank you. Um, consent agenda, Mr. Cole, have we got any warrants?
Yes, we have, uh, two warrants. And I moved the following name bills of the neighborhood public schools and opting in a total aggregate of three hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and sixty cents we approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any more warrants, sir? That's it.
Oh, here's another, another one here. Oh, wait a minute, not the same one yet, that, that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It was the total, I believe. Um, we have school committee business meeting minutes from September twentieth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seven.
Is there any discussion about the minutes from September twentieth? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Um, subcommittee updates, um, Steve Cole, would you like to do the finance subcommittee update?
Sure. All right, we met on, uh, Thursday, September twenty-third and talked about, uh, basically the schedule for upcoming finance subcommittee meetings for FY twenty-two. Uh, made a plan to, uh, have the meetings on Thursdays preceding the second school committee meeting of each month. And if that date should fall on a holiday or during the school break, uh, the meeting dates are adjusted. We also went over the FY twenty-one update. Uh, Mr. Little Hale informed the group, the committee that FY twenty-one is now closed. FY twenty-one recap schedule was provided that showed the revenue and expenses by source. Schedule reflects F one, FY twenty-one activity only. Uh, any source showing a FY twenty-one deficit utilized by, uh, FY twenty carryover funds to cover the deficit was noted. Uh, no source was in a deficit position as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, which is the end of the fiscal year. Uh, fundraising, we did have a considerable amount of discussion about fundraising. Reports were provided that listed the approved fundraising activities for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two to date. More work is to be done to provide further information. Then we conclude the meeting.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Cole, about the FinCon? Hearing none? Uh, we're going to go to the policy subcommittee? Yep?
Are, are we going to have the discussion about, like, the, last time we talked about the athletics especially because that seems to be the bulk of fundraising? But like how all the expenses get broken down between the budget we give, the monies parents pay, and then the fundraising that layers on top of that?
We did talk about, um, expanding the language for when kids sign up for sports and having on there, um, you know, this will cost you three hundred dollars and you should expect to pay between this and this, um, to be able to play, whether it's for equipment or, um, fundraising at a later date. But I believe that's going to be another FinCon and policy, um, discussion before we can bring it to the full committee. So we'll just have to schedule those. All right.
Can we do like a joint, joint subcommittee meeting, like how the city council does?
I guess, can we do that? Policy and FinCon in one meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Two meetings.
Okay, sure, we can set that up, definitely. Um, Ms. Spalding for policy subcommittee report.
Um, yes, we met on September twenty-eighth and we will be bringing three, two policies forward for first reading at the next meeting. One is pertaining to the school year calendar and when the school year will begin as, as it pertains to Labor Day. And the other is, um, a school, it's a suggested calendar of topics for the school committee. We will also be bringing forward two policies that need updating. Um, BDE, which is about the subcommittees of the school committee, and policy IB, which is about curricular, about the curriculum. Um, both of those refer to a, to a, um, subcommittee that no longer exists on the school committee meeting. And I would like to thank Lisa Furlong and Colin Jansen for their help with the website. They've helped us revamp the policy manual and we're still working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spalding. Does anybody have any questions for Sheila? All right, um, last subcommittee update is from Joint Ed, Mr. Greer.
So Joint Ed hasn't, hasn't met yet. Uh, we're meeting tomorrow at five o'clock at the senior center.
All right, uh, Mr. Cole, I mean, Mr. Mann?
Um, yeah, I can, um, give a report actually that should be listed here, which is the CISO meeting.
Okay.
Sheila and I attended. Um, we had our first presentation. It was a presentation about the, um, literacy program over the summer, uh, which was extremely successful. And, um, the information that we got in, in, uh, from, from the folks who were presenting to us was that the key factor was this year funding transportation for kids to be able to get to the schools, to these, uh, programs during the summer. In the past, we hadn't done transportation. This year we had some ESSR funds and plugged it in and that going forward is clearly going to be a recommendation that we provide transportation over the summer for those kids to get in. They felt that we are a huge difference. And, you know, it's a program, uh, it's a program where kids are reading every day, they're writing every day, and they're talking and presenting every day. So, um, it, it's a real good program. So that, that's essentially the most key thing.
Great, thank you. Um, number six, the superintendent's report, Mr. Gallagher.
All right, um, just going to talk about the open houses, but I just wanted to, on the twenty-eighth, um, we had a focus group with our city council. We got a strategic planning. Uh, it was, it went very well. We got a lot of great input from city council, um, and I want to thank them for their participation. Um, I'll go quickly on our open houses. Um, myself, Nancy Croats, and Assistant Superintendent Belido had, uh, great fortune in going to the open houses. And I got to say a few words, um, to our parents, um, the open house, the high school. All open houses were well-attended and I was just really, um, excited about the enthusiasm and the positivity and the excitement. I think that's what's awesome about school, uh, and opening up schools is really the beginning of the year and the excitement at the beginning of the year. So it generated from all the parents. The open house of the high school is on the twenty-second. At Knox Middle School followed right after on the twenty-third. At Brezner Hand, um, pre-K K, open house was on the twenty-seventh. And the Brezner Hand Open House for grade one to three was on the twenty-ninth. And I just think, um, there was a lot of, I think, civil lining that, that we've learned from a pandemic. But I just really thank the parents and the guardians, um, all last year for their, uh, flexibility, for their understanding. And really, I believe, it, um, really brought our school community together. Um, and moving into this school year, I think we're utilizing that momentum of togetherness and we're going to continue to do great things throughout this school year too. So it's one of the parents and the administration, uh, all of our principals for their hard work and having a successful open house. Thanks.
Thank you, superintendent. Uh, does anybody have any questions about the, um, opening a school for Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Mann?
I forgot one school, I'm sorry, uh, Mullen School, Ms. Rossi. Um, so I also got to attend that one. But she was smart enough not to let me speak to the parents, so they had a great night. No, um, they went right into the classrooms at the moment. Uh, we meet and met them and greeted them in the foyer as they were coming in, so there you go.
Yeah, just a, just a follow-up on the strategic planning. Um, how we are, how are we rolling it out to the rest of the community and how many people have been participants so far? Strategic plan, how are we rolling it out for the rest of the?
Yes. So right now, we've rolled out our strategic plan process. Uh, we work with the school committee, we work with the city council, we worked with all of our teachers, faculty, support staff. We worked with our extended leadership team, following the same protocols, gathering feedback on a portrait of a graduate, and then really doing a squog analysis of, um, the successes of our, uh, current strategic plan. Um, so right now, we're well over five hundred people that have participated in that process. We're working with our central office team and obviously our medical advisory team. We would like to have, um, a night for the parents and the guardians, uh, to come on out. Um, we're thinking right now, we're drafting, um, fee school, having in a, in the auditorium for an open session, kind of an overview of the night, and then go to smaller breakout rooms, um, within the Knox Middle School. So we're working on that. We really believe having an in-person, um, planning process is the best way to go. Um, we just want to make sure we can coordinate that. There you go, Mr. Nickerson shut me off. Coordinate that to, uh, meet all of the protocols, but that will be coming up soon. Other groups that we're looking forward to meeting with is our NAF board, also the Rotary, and then have a general community for, uh, people that are not involved in the, uh, school system. So ultimately, with the work that we want to do over the next month and a half is, hopefully we'll have, you know, over a thousand, uh, people participate in giving input on the, uh, strategic planning as we develop it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, superintendent. Um, next is new business. Does anybody have any new business?
I just wanted to, oops, isn't that working? Um, I wanted to say the CPAC meeting is on October twentieth this year, so the first one will be happening. And Lauren Hajar, the officer, would like to come and present to us at our next school committee meeting.
Okay, excellent, we'll get that done. Uh, talk after, so don't forget to do that. Thank you. Um, if there's no new business, then I think I need to get a motion to adjourn.
We also, I just want to add on to the policy report. We talked about, uh, surveying in the district as well. I don't quite know how we're going to bring that up as a policy, you know, if we're going to start writing or we're going to have a discussion. But at some point, just so people don't get caught up by that.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.